I was just reminded if I could turn back time by share, but. Mr. Barnes, thank you.
I can too.
Don't you dare sing that.
What you've done to me.
I'd love to hear you sing that.
You've done this.
I believe you do. I believe in you.
I sing more like singing.
Are we trying to fix it?
We're trying. It says unconnected, but when I try to tell it anything, it says connection failed.
Okay, we are having a IT issue with our clock. As you all know, it is 10:00 AM and it's not 8:00 AM.
Oh, they took down the clock up there?
We have the old clock.
It's also saying 8:00 AM.
Oh.
I'm gonna turn to the.
Oh, the atomic clock.
iPhone.
What's, what's, what's happening?
It says 10:02.
Is it mad at us?
Somebody hacked us?
Yeah, but even the. Oh, is it, is, isn't that daylight savings time reversal?
No.
It's 10:03.
Here, Chris.
Groundhog's Day. Is Bill Murray in attendance?
We really have to go through all that again?
Yes, we're gonna start all over.
Oh, please no.
IT is on it. If you bear with us for about two to three minutes. No, that's not true.
We got the time fixed, but it's still not connecting.
Okay, so the, the time is correct. We will, can you just run a stopwatch on your clock? And I think we'll be fine. The lineup for citizen input is a court of veterans, so I think we'll be good.
So Judge, I'll do what Dr. Schimmick suggested a couple of months ago. When you get down to one minute, I'll just raise my hand. That'll tell you you gotta move together.
Apparently you are the A-team. Thank you. It is now 10:06 in the Brazos County Commissioners Court. The Brazos County will meet in regular session today on September 9/25 at 10:07 in the Commissioners' courtroom of the Brazos County Administrators Building. Today's invocation and pledges will be led by Commissioner Watson.
Good morning. Almighty, we come before you humbled in our mission to serve. With that, grant us the wisdom and the grace to do what is best for those that we serve. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Once again, thank you for your patience. We will move into Agenda Item Two, call for citizen input and/or concerns. First up, Chris Barnes. Chris, please state your name and precincts you live in and the benefits of getting here early.
Yeah, I get to lead off every time this morning. My name is Chris Barnes.
It's important to have a good lead off better.
Oh, we'll see. Chris Barnes, Precinct Two. Just a couple of comments. First, thank you all for letting me come and speak, Judge and Commissioners. Hopefully, this is a little, it may be controversial, but at least it's not adversarial, I don't think. There have been lots of comments both today, this morning, and in the past on how the county has gotten into the budget crisis we're in. Mostly in regards to the appraisal district, Comptroller's office, and unfunded mandates from the state. I would submit to the court that there is a little bit more of a basic root to this. And it's that taxes are based on the wrong base. Property is in itself an investment. So anytime you're taxing an investment, you're taxing the wrong thing. We should be taxing sales. And I know that this is somewhat of a change of mentality. The real solution here, then, is to abandon property taxes and convert everything to a sales tax. It's, for one, it's a far less subject to the whims of an appraisal district. They, you know, our sales taxes are set by what people spend. They, the appraisal district doesn't get to change that number. Now, I realize that this is not something we can do today. It's not something we can do by ourselves. Either Brazos County, certainly Brazos County can't just do it on their own. It would kind of kill local businesses if suddenly our, our prices here are more expensive than the surrounding counties. But it does start with a change in our mentality. We need to start thinking about different ways of doing this. And it's something that a lot of the public has started doing. I think we need more elected officials starting to change their mentality and how they want to do this. And that starts at all levels of government. Thank you.
Mr. Barnes, thank you. The court now calls Christine Schimmick. Ms. Schimmick, please state your name and the precinct that you reside.
Christine Schimmick, Precinct Two. Good morning, Commissioners and Acting County Judge. This morning, I want to talk about the RMA and in particular, a document called Moving Forward 2022 and Beyond. This is an online, online document. And I have first to start with just a couple quotes to reorient ourselves. So in December 2020, the Brazos County Commissioners Court, as authorized by the Texas Transportation Commission, established the Brazos County Regional Mobility Authority to address transportation issues in the county. The RMA will undertake legislative required actions to reduce the time required to identify and implement a range of multimodal projects already prioritized by the Bryan College Station Metropolitan Planning Process. There were three goals specified. Near term is the Arrington Road and WD Fitch intersection in College Station. They want to accelerate construction of a preferred near term, even though they admit funding is not available until after 2030. Intermediate term project interchange plans for Relus at 21 and 47, absolutely necessary. Very, very important to get that done. And then the longer term project was the Eastern Interlude. And they identify, I gotta fix this because I can't see my paper. They identify alignments, warranting further study, all intended to accelerate implementation. The MPO has been in place since 1970, has a duty to fulfill state and federal mandates. And based on what's in the RMA website online, in essence, we are to believe that while the MPO has prioritized projects and seems to be working on things, the RMA can make it all faster. On August 26th, just switching gears, the court discussed a study for compensation of benefits. And looking at it, it seems a bit pricey, but it is a great start towards transparency because it establishes the existing and the lacking in-house skills and benefits for the county. Okay, until you have, this, I have a little expertise on that. And until you have identified all the pieces, it is very difficult to describe the whole. Okay, getting back to RMA MPO. Why not conduct a study to answer questions such as, how much redundancy exists between these two agencies? The MPO has been in place since 1970. Is it simply a need of updating? Shouldn't these boards offer to include at least one citizen from each precinct in Brazos County? If the only budgeted item for the unfunded RMA is the state-required audit, shouldn't that audit show zero dollars in and zero dollars out? I mean, isn't that the definition of unfunded? What does creative funding mean? What will this audit show and where is the money? Do we, in light of control exerted by the appraisal district and state mandates of the comptroller, do we really need yet another agency that brings with it the baggage of state dictative mandates that tie the hands of county officials and further destroy the middle class, effectively creating debt slays in Brazos County? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Schimmick. The court now calls Kathy Vians. Kathy, state your name and the precinct you reside in.
Kathy Vians, Precinct Four. One of the reason, actually, the main reason that I come to court every week for the last couple of years and pushing on budget issues is my own perspective. And that comes from my family. I'm one of four girls, no sons. And we, when we married and had families, we spread out. We had one in London, one in South Africa, one was in Chicago, I was in Pennsylvania, and we lost touch with each other. But when my parents retired and they bought a pop-up camper to travel around the country, and some of us moved back to the country, they would travel around the country and visit with us. And when my mom died, my dad didn't enjoy those trips anymore. So he asked my sisters and me, without our husbands or children, to meet him someplace in the country that he enjoyed visiting. So one year it was a mule ride down the Grand Canyon, one year it was the balloon festival in Albuquerque. And so for 10 years after my mother died, my father put money into a fund. I got to be in control. And we would pick a place to stay, and the money would cover all our meals. My dad didn't have to worry about the check coming to the table or anything. And we always picked nice places, you know, nice master for my dad, ground floor bedroom, nice areas. We went to restaurants without worrying about how much the tab was gonna come to at the end of the meal. And it was great. Now, my dad's been gone for nine years. And my sisters are, three of us are now in Texas, one's still in Chicago. And we haven't taken a single sister's trip since my dad died. And the reason is that four or $5,000 has to come out of our pocket. It's not free money. And that's kind of how I see the court spending money, is if it's dad's money and not. not your money. I want to get the impression, I would like to believe, I would like to be naive enough to believe, that when you're looking at a fourth floor that maybe needed someplace in the future, or the bells and whistles for different structures, that you'll look at that money as if it's your own. Would you go into debt? Would you spend every nickel to buy the bells and whistles for your own house or your vacation? I want you to look at the county's tax money the same way as you look at your own, and not as if you're wealthy landowners with great incomes, but you're an average person with average income or below. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. The court now calls Don Gilman. Don, welcome. Please state your name and the precinct you reside in.
Don Gilman, Precinct Two. Thank you for this opportunity. I bring the court and the staff a challenge. And before I give you the challenge, I need to give you some context for where the challenge comes from. It's born of my recent experiences regarding property taxes and many years' experience working with, indirectly with the county, and being a citizen of the county since 1980. So I've been here a little while.
Sorry, Don, I'm the person, here.
Yes, ma'am.
Here, if you'll speak a little bit more into the mic.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, if you'll just adjust it up a tad, there you go.
My apologies. Thank you for the correction. In 2024, the tax office had us at 280, sorry, 268 a square foot in an older neighborhood. Imagine my shock when we got the paperwork and it said 389. I think one of the Commissioners can relate to my shock. Because I have a flexible job schedule, I could take the time to research, and let's use the kind term negotiate, to bring it down to a lower value. So with that experience and my experience with the county, I want to challenge the court and the staff to consider doing a little bit more in communicating with my fellow citizens, especially those who don't have the luxury of taking the time off to attend the workshops to negotiate with the tax office, to, one, explain what I heard earlier in the workshop regarding the budget challenges. Are, you represent us, and the instrument that you, the board, that you use is the staff, and you make investments. And these are necessary. And the staff, the employees of the county must be taken care of, no question about that. And we have to make investments. And sometimes you have to look ahead and take some risks. But I don't think that folks who are working, toiling, trying to get themselves out of student debt, paying their increased taxes, dealing with inflation, really understand the dilemma that you explained earlier today and your relationship or lack of one with the tax office. So to summarize, I challenge you and the staff to make an extra effort to explain where you're at, why, and what can and can't be done relative to the county tax office, because I really don't think most people can take the time to understand. Thank you.
Bruce, would it be fair to make a comment to Mr. Gilman of our new relationship with the appraisal tax, or did I just do that?
No.
Okay. The court now calls Cindy Wiley. Cindy, welcome back. And state your name and the precinct you reside in.
Cindy Wiley, Precinct One. Good morning again. I want to speak about an ideology. But first, I want to, to explain my biggest argument against property tax is that, for me, I see it as an unreal, you're taxing me on a market value, but that really equates to an unrealized capital gain, because somebody else is assessing the value of my property as opposed to the market. A buyer is going to buy what it, what, I mean, your property is going to sell for whatever the market demands. So, moving on, what an opportunity all of you have today to show the people you swore to serve and protect that this body will be reducing the property tax rate because you are exercising fiscal accountability to the people. Would it be truthful to say that all decisions made by this body were to only spend what is necessary and not based upon wants or legacy intentions? I know both Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Nettles campaigned on fiscal responsibility and lowering property tax rates. I'm counting on both of you to at least uphold your campaign promises. It can be a bit messy because two of you were present the entire fiscal spending year, two of you only for nine months, and one of you for two and a half months. If Commissioner Watson initiates a reelection campaign, you end up being the only commissioner that can be evaluated for all of the 2025 spending habits of this body. By Christmas, we shall all know who is running for what position. Which brings me back to President Trump's executive order regarding the electronic voting systems. September deadline for 2.1 certification of all electronic voting systems is right around the corner. The issue, as I understand it, no volunteer voting system testing laboratory is capable of testing at this new level. A group of us will be going to Phase One training to learn how to hand count per the Secretary of State-approved procedures. We will follow up with Phase Two training in preparation for the primary for 2026. This has not involved the GOP party here locally. We're on our own. Let's see how Texas ranks according to the Wallet Hub 2025 article. Number one being the lowest for state and local taxes, tax rates. Texas ranks number 42, which is not impressive. This county's website states county residents and taxpayers need to be able to adequately gauge whether a county government is effective, competent, frugal with tax revenues, et cetera. I think we can all agree that there is a right way and a wrong way to deal with citizens. I'd like to share something from my former neighbor, Councilman Bob Yancey. Thanks. In the Texas Ags conversation regarding this data center that's being proposed in College Station, I have issu, this is his quote, "I have issues with the constraints on transparency imposed on us with the voters, to whom my clear and unambiguous primary fiduciary duty actually rests, which I'll not forget." He's a good guy. "I pray that each one of you keep this first and foremost in all your decisions regarding taxpayers' hard-earned dollars." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. The court now calls Charles Coats. Charles, thank you for being here. Please state your name and the precinct you reside in.
Thank you. Charles Coats, Precinct Two. I work for Bryan College Station Habitat for Humanity. And I'm here today to, first off, congratulate those few candidates who are running for local office, who we've heard may be running and have announced, and also those who will, in the future, put their hat in the ring to help serve this community, both at the local, state, and federal level. And we'd like to invite, as representing Habitat for Humanity, we'd like to invite any candidate or anyone who's just interested in helping Habitat for Humanity build a home for a family in need within the city of Bryan, to come out to our, I believe it's, it's our eighth or ninth Candidates Build. We have done this every year since 2017. We invite all candidates for local, state, federal office to come out and swing a hammer, whether you're a Republican, an independent, or a Democrat, or what have you, to work alongside even your own opponents to help a family in need. So here are some details for you, and we do hope that some of you come out. We'll have this on our website, which is habitatbcs.org. But it is going to be on October 11, 2025, starting at 8:30 a.m. Check-in, and then 9 o'clock we'll get started. We hope it's going to be exterior painting this year. So it should be an opportunity for a lot of folks to help out. Go to habitatbcs.org backslash volunteer, or click on the volunteer tab. We work with a company called Volunteer Hub. You just create a login, and then you can search for the event. It's real simple, and you'll get updates as we get closer to the event and if anything changes. So, wanted to make you aware of that. Really hope that some of you will come out. And we'll have more information on that. Feel free to reach out to me, again, Charles Coats. And I can provide you all with my card if anybody doesn't have my information. Second of all, with what little time I have left, did want to address, it sounds like this Wednesday, there's going to be a workshop coming up, I believe that's what I heard, regarding maybe changes to y'all's meetings. And I just wanted to tell you, from my own personal perspective, that I do feel that the county, out of all the political entities within this county, has been, I really appreciate the weekly meetings. I think it's important. I also appreciate the workshops that we've begun to see more of, and more local visibility for the discussions that you're having on different important topics. But I would encourage you to really consider that well when you're thinking about maybe going to a different schedule, because, you know, especially for those that live outside the city limits. You know, this is our only political body locally that we can come to, those who live out in the county. And for myself, at least, and maybe for some others who live in that area, we really do appreciate how much transparency and regularity that we see in y'all's debates every week and the information that you get out to the public. So, yeah, just please keep that in mind. And I think you all are doing a great job on the transparency, and I just ask that you keep it up. Again, Candidates Build, coming up on October 11 at 8:30 a.m. Details on our website. Please sign up.
Since that is an important date for everybody to join in the community project, where's the location? Do you know?
It will be in Bryan, most likely on East MLK. By signing up through our website, you'll be able to get that information, and should anything change. But at this date, it's more of a save the date. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Charles, thank you so much. Based on my records, this concludes Citizen Input. Thank you for your patience today with the three meetings and allowing our team to get through this and get everybody on that. We will now move to Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of the Following Amendments to the respective contracts for the addition of the Fourth Floor and associated expansion to the parking garage for the 101 North Texas Avenue project. The estimated total cost of this addition is approximately $10 million. Do we have a motion?
Move approval, A and B.
Have a motion, A and B. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second.
Judge, I-
End the discussion. The Chair recognizes Commissioner Brown.
I'd like to make an amendment to that motion. I move that we take this $10 million and put it in a general fund and reduce our tax, and then we go out in the bond market in the spring to ask for $10 million or more for 101 across the street.
Let's talk to our parliamentarian. I think we had this motion on the agenda a week ago. We tabled it till today. We have a motion and a second. And this amendment or this agenda item, if I'm not mistaken, is strictly on the ability to amend the contract of the Fourth, of the 101.
It could be amended with the agreement of the person making the motion.
What do you mean, with me saying?
So, to amend the agenda item, which-
No, amending the motion.
Amending the motion from Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Watson would have to agree.
It's her motion.
It's her motion, correct. Commissioner Watson.
I'm looking at, yeah, I wish I'd known that before. That's what I'm looking for, okay. I was looking for you in the audience.
This isn't getting rid of the Fourth Floor. This is just putting it off until next spring, when we go to the bond market.
Correct.
Taking the $10 million that we've allocated for this today, put it back in the general fund, and then reduce the taxes that we're fixing to put in place for the citizens of Brazos County.
If this contract is approved, I have to have the $10 million to sign it into a purchase order. What we can do during the time of, if the court approves you go out for debt during the spring, there is such a thing, and this is where Marcy, the First Assistant County Auditor can, or the County Auditor.
Speaking now of Ms. Nina Payne, our budget.
And we could do a reimbursement bond where, in a certain time period, if we go into spending that $10 million, we could get reimbursed from debt. But if we go out for a PO and this contract is approved, Commissioners' Court is agreeing, which is an obligation, of having that $10 million set aside. Once the spring comes around and Commissioners' Court approves to go out for debt, that's when we can set forth a reimbursement bond to where we can reimburse ourselves back, and that $10 million can go back to the general fund.
And if Charles is over there, does that have some kind of an impact that we-
We're at the point where, Ms. Commissioner Watson, you can either approve his amendment or deny it, correct?
Yes.
The ball's in your court.
If this doesn't pass the Fourth Floor, we have to move on with the project. The Fourth Floor would not be considered anymore after today.
Judge, I think there is one other issue that you would need to be aware of, and that is that we are in contract with the people to build-
Currently.
-the first three floors, and we would either have to suspend that entire event until the spring. But right now, we need to move forward on this contract.
Right, we have an opportunity to amend the contract with the original agenda item and the motion in a second, but the amendment is in Commissioner Watson's court, correct, at this point in time?
You can still do the bonds in the spring, even if you go forward with the motion.
Correct.
So would we need to, with his motion, would that not go forward? We would do this?
Yeah, stop everything.
Until spring, until the springtime, correct?
Well, but we're already in contract.
No, the contract negotiation is current.
We are under contract to build the building at-
No matter what.
... already right now. So.
Well, I would like to visit, similar to what Commissioner Brown was saying, is in the spring, visit putting that $10 million for a debt bond and, you know, putting that back in general fund. We could have it certainly there for the unpredictable times that we're in with things happening, with appraisal values and Austin and everything else, putting that $10 million back into debt, so to speak. So if we approve this today, Item Three, A and B, as is-
We have that option.
I would still be very interested in the spring in revisiting this $10 million being put into debt and put, pay the general fund back.
And we have that option if we keep the motion clean. But if we amend it, we do not have that option.
Right.
So I just want that to be clear to Commissioner Watson.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, by approving, by us voting for this now, it does not preclude us from going on and requesting the debt bond of the-
Well, just so you're clear, we need to have clarity on the amendment first.
Right. So on my amendment, if I'm understanding correctly, and we vote to continue and add the Fourth Floor, it does not preclude us from going forward with the, what did you say, what kind of refund, re-
We can still go out for debt, and we can do a reimbursement bond to where we get reimbursed the money.
So it does not change his potential, us having a bond-
Correct.
-replacement bond.
Correct.
So, we would still be able to take $10 million and decrease the tax rate?
Not today.
Not today.
I still have to have that $10 million in order for the purchase order to be amended.
It has to be in the budget.
And then we would go forward with, like, the March election, it would be on the bond election?
No, this Commissioners' Court, we're going to have a workshop in the next upcoming months to go out to discuss debt opportunities. And that's when it's up to Commissioners' Court to move forward with the debt.
All I'm trying to do is decrease the tax amount to the citizens, either with, either as last year's tax rate or no new revenue rate, one of the two. But you're telling me that if we do this, if we use my amendment, then this project across the street is dead until next spring.
The Fourth Floor would be-
The Fourth Floor, yes.
And we can't, in the springtime of next year, we couldn't go to the bond market, get the money, and then do the Fourth Floor.
We'll be in construction probably by that time. Carl, no?
And-
Yes, they're shaking their heads. We'll be-
Correct me if I'm wrong, Charles and Nina, if we start construction on a three-floor facility, that does not give us the ability to do the Fourth Floor later. Court calls Charles Witt.
Sorry, I didn't mean to be presumptuous.
No, thank you. We just need clarity. Thank you.
Because we're doing the construction manager at risk, the design is almost close to being complete for the first phase. And so that project is being designed currently as- And so, that project is being designed currently as only a three-story facility. If we need to do a Fourth Floor, then we would have to amend that now to be able to accommodate the structure, the foundation, the infrastructure for the piping and everything else, to accommodate the maximum number of floors that we're trying to do. And so, the proposal for you today is for the additional Fourth Floor, and we need to know now, if you will, whether to tell the design and the construction team to allow for that or-
Or not offered. And then we have options to do the things that Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Condala are concerned about.
So we can still go forward later for the replacement bond?
Yes, ma'am.
We can still do that.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, I would like for my motion to stand as is, for us to make that vote with the understanding that we will come back with a workshop and whatever to do the replacement bond.
To give us options.
Give us options to do the-
For our bond debt, or all of the above.
Uh-oh. So you don't have a-
Simply a dramatic entrance.
I have no opinion on-
On that part of it, okay.
On that piece of it. I, procedurally, we need to know what to tell the architect and the construction company.
We postponed that a week, not that that means anything and we're worried about anybody, but Commissioner Brown has made an amendment. It will not be on the motion or the agenda item if you do not accept it.
I do not accept it.
Commissioner Watson does not accept the amendment.
Now, back to the motion that she made.
Say that again?
Now, we're back to her motion, which I believe was seconded by-
Commissioner Condala. And continued discussion on the court, I believe, Commissioner Nettles?
Yes. So, I've gone back and forth on this issue, in part, and I want to send a word out to staff. When we have these workshops, y'all need to provide in writing the information you're going to present. You know, I've never worked for a decision maker anywhere that I didn't have to present a read-ahead before the meeting. So, during the workshop, I probably would have other questions, because it appeared to me that the basis for having the Fourth Floor was because we had an issue with courtroom space. After looking at the presentation and reviewing it, we don't have an issue with courtroom space. We currently have four district courts, two county commissioner courts, or two county courts, two assistant courts. So that's eight courts in the courthouse. We also have JP Four. That's a ninth court in the courthouse. Because when we build the annex, we're going to move JP Four over to the annex. That's plenty of, that's three more courts than we currently have. So that clearly gets us to 20, 25 years. My recommendation for courtroom usage is, our courtrooms, by their very nature, tend not to be used all the time. We need to disconnect from the idea that that court sitting outside your chambers belongs to a certain judge. Instead, we treat our judges like modern circuit riders. We move them around to different courts, and we automate the scheduling process. In order to do that effectively, though, you've also got to increase IT capability so a judge and their staff can walk into that court and be able to deliver seamlessly judicial services. And even expand to this building, where we could have not criminal courts but civil courts in JP Two, in this facility, which used to be a courtroom, and then when we build the new Commissioners Court, additional space. But the problem is, and I realized once I reviewed the presentation by staff, is personnel. When you create those additional courts, you're going to have an increase in court personnel, in adult probation, in indigent defense lawyers, because for each new court, you have to additional people assigned to do those kind of jobs. Which means that the three-story building that we have planned is very quickly going to fill up, and we need a Fourth Floor. So, I now reached the conclusion that, and the idea that I know and we all know, you cannot build 10 or 15 years from now something as inexpensive as you can build it today. We're just not going to be able to do that. It's going to cost more, one, we won't be able to build on top of that building, so we're going to have to buy land and build a building or acquire a building somewhere. And 10 to 15 years from now, that's going to be more expensive. So I do support the idea of us having a Fourth Floor. But I also support the idea of us seriously considering in the spring going out for bond for this-
Yes.
-to reduce the impact on our general fund.
I agree.
Thank you, Commissioner Nettles. Any further discussion? Commissioner Condala.
Well, and to that degree, we have a three and a half cent, right, debt service. So for a county our size, that's pretty remarkable. We've paid for things as we go. I would just say the $10 million, looking at potential bond in the spring, not just of the $10 million, but maybe we should evaluate, you know, maybe 30% of that project's cost. We could put money back in general fund and take responsible debt out for it if we're earning more than our debt is costing us on the markets. So, these are all things I want us to evaluate when we're going over that in the spring.
Thank you. Commissioners Brown or Watson, any further comments?
No.
It is the intention of the court to do a roll call vote on Items Three, Four, and Five, because we don't want there to be any confusion. So, no further discussion. We have a motion and a second on Agenda Item Number Three. We will do a roll call vote, starting on my right. Commissioner Nettles?
Yes.
Commissioner Condala?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Show the judge voting aye. Agenda Item Number Three is approved. Moving to Agenda Item Number Four, the adoption of the county budget for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2026.
Move for approval.
We have a motion for approval?
Second.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Condala, second by Commissioner Watson. We have five amendments to date. We will vote on each individual amendment, and we will run the amendments now before we vote. We'll vote on each individual amendment. If there are any other amendments proposed to the court, we will evaluate those, and if adopted, we will recess to run the numbers to fix those amendments. So now, we will move to Amendment Number One. For those out there, I will read Amendments One, Two, Three, and Four, and Commissioner Brown will read Amendment Number Five. We will take these up and vote on these individually and discuss, and once again, we will have a roll call vote accordingly. Amendment Number One, reallocation of funds to the appropriate accounts to increase the use of the general fund reserve fund balance by $285,000 and to increase contractual services, human resources, non-capital, by the same amount to fund CIP 25-571, Compensation and Benefits Study, as approved on August 26, 25.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, we will do the roll call vote. Commissioner Nettles?
Aye.
Commissioner Condala?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Watson?
Aye.
Show the judge voting aye. Moving to Agenda Item Number Two. Moving to B0225-1, Public Communications Officer from hourly to salary. This change will increase the salary and wages by $3, benefits by $1, and increase the use of general fund reserve fund balance by the same amount. Did I get that correct? Thank you. I need a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, we will follow the roll call vote. Commissioner Nettles?
Aye.
Commissioner Condala?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Watson?
Aye.
Show the judge voting aye. Agenda Amendment Number Three. Move to Position B0240-1, Chief of Staff, Legal Officer from Commissioners Court Administration to County Judge's Office. Update the job title from Chief of Staff, Legal Officer to Chief of Staff. This change will decrease the Commissioners Court Administration's salary and wages by $193,173, decrease benefits by $65,446, and increase the County Judge's budget salaries and wages and benefits by the same amounts. This will have zero net effect on the total Brazos County budget.
Motion for approval?
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Commissioners, any discussions? There being none, we will move to the roll call vote. Commissioner Nettles?
Aye.
Commissioner Condala?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Watson?
Aye.
Show the judge voting aye. Moving on to Amendment Number Four. Move Position B1224-1, Web Content Administrator from Information Technology Administration to County Judge's Office. Update the job title from Web Content Administrator to Digital Services Officer. This change will decrease the Information Technology Administration's salary and wages by $108,096, decrease benefits by $44,194, and increase the County Judge's budget for salaries and wages and benefits by the same amount. This will have zero net effect on the total Brazos County budget.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, we will continue the roll call vote. Commissioner Nettles?
Aye.
Commissioner Condala?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Watson?
Aye.
Show the judge voting aye. Moving to Agenda Item Number Five, the court calls on Commissioner Brown.
Judge, I'd really like to pull this down, but I'll go ahead and read it. And the only reason I put this on here was I want people to be aware of the fact that we spent one entire day, this court spent one entire day, dealing with outside nonprofits that came to us asking for money, asking for your tax dollars. And I think they look at us, and I'm not saying anything against the nonprofits, what I am saying is that they look at us like a big piggy bank. And it's easier to come to us and get $10,000 or $5,000 than it is to go out and raise that money on their own. So, all I want to do with this is just put that out there, that next year, we need to start weaning these nonprofits off of the county. This is your money, we need to protect it. Do you want me to go ahead and read this?
No, no. Can I?
I want to make a, let's ask Bruce's question, since he said he would like to pull it. Do we have to read it, or can we pull it?
He does not have to read it if he's pulling it.
Okay, good.
Commissioner Watson, did you want to say something?
Well, you know, in defense of those organizations, all of them, you know, I'm involved with several nonprofits, all of them do the best that they can. They absolutely all go out and do fundraisers. The need in Brazos County is great. I understand that we're under budget constraints, but the dollar amount that most of those organizations, in totality, it does look like a lot of money. But when you look at what each organization asks for, I don't think that they consider us a piggy bank. There, by no means are we fully funding them. You know, it's all the way down from maybe $1,000. Yes, there are some that get up to $10,000. But to say that they can't consider the county a piggy bank, I think is sort of unfair to those organizations, because they do serve our, you know, those less than in our county. And so I just want to say, I don't, I disagree with his comments in saying that about those organizations, because they work hard, they do fundraisers, I've attended fundraisers, I have contributed to those organizations. And so, yes, we can talk about maybe not funding them at the level that we've been doing, but I, it's somewhat disparaging, in my opinion, to say that they consider the county a piggy bank. That's not fair to those organizations. That's a different conversation to say, we may not be able to give them as much. But they do a good service, that's why we've even considered contributing to them over time, because they serve our residents who have less than and have unfortunate situations.
I'm not trying to degrade any-
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Any nonprofits that come to us, not at all. I know there's some very good nonprofits out there. My total point is, this is citizen money that we're dealing with here, and we don't need to be giving it away if we don't have to. I don't know how much, I don't remember how much the total amount was that we did on that one full day that we all sit up here, but that would have helped reduce our tax rate that we're going to ask for after a while. So, that's where I go with this.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown, thank you, Commissioner Watson. So, we have a motion and a second. We've read and adopted four of the amendments that we put on. We have Citizen Input, which now the court will call Kathy Vien's.
Do we want to take other motions before?
Oh.
Take other motions.
Do we have any other amendment motions? I apologize.
I have a motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Nettles.
For Roden Bridge, delete one, B2617-1 Drainage Specialist, Group 22, Step 9, hourly, full-time, $118,938. Create one Drainage Supervisor, Group 23, Step 12, hourly, full-time, $132,358. Total impact, additional $13,420.
I'm sorry.
Why don't we have that in our package?
What are you saying? I mean, I'm lost.
This is a motion from Commissioner Nettles.
May I speak?
Yes, please.
It's submitted past the deadline.
I'm sorry.
It was submitted past the deadline. I needed all amendments submitted by-
I know.
-August, the last Friday of August, and in order for me to have everything prepared for the adoption budget, it was submitted past the deadline. And what he has read is increased to a position, and it's just the estimated salary and benefits, and so I do not have that calculated correctly. It's, we'll have to revise the amendment if this goes to motion.
So, before we take, we have an amendment in front of us. We can take a motion and a second, and then we'd have to recess to have the impact and have it stated-
Correctly.
-written up so everybody can have a moment with it.
You mean what he just said?
Correct.
Okay, so what happened to the one we were talking about, about the, what communities?
We, Commissioner Brown pulled that.
Pulled it.
He just, it was withdrawn. He just wanted to make comment. I'm sorry.
Okay, I got lost there. I guess I was thinking about-
That's all right. We want everybody to be clear on where we are and what we've done.
Yeah, I need to be clear.
So, we adopted the first four amendments. Amendment Number Five was withdrawn by the author. Now we have an additional amendment, Number Six, in reference to Roden Bridge and a salary increase. Would that be, is that too general?
It's a salary increase, and what I'll do is I'll have to go upstairs and do the calculation to make sure I still balance.
Only if there is a second, a motion and a second.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we have Amendment Number Six for Roden Bridge. Is there a motion to accept?
He made the motion.
I made the motion.
Sorry, we have a motion. I'm sorry, I'm thinking as I'm reading everything, and I apologize. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I am so lost.
Is there a second?
Does not appear to be.
There does not appear to be a second. Amendment Number Six is-
Dies for lack of a second.
Dies for lack of a second.
Okay.
Commissioners, are there any other amendments that you would like to introduce at this time? And thank you all for your patience. There being none, we will move to public comment on Agenda Item Number Four. The court now calls Kathy Vien's. Kathy, please state your precinct and your name and the precinct you reside in, sorry.
Kathy Vien's Precinct Four. Before I start, I would like to comment on Commissioner Brown's comments on Amendment Number Five. I concur with that concept, because God loves a cheerful giver. You give me my tax money back, and I would love to be able to cheerfully donate to those charities and those nonprofits, instead of you all telling me who my tax dollars should go to. So, Commissioner Brown, I like your approach.
Thank you, plus you get the tax benefit.
Right, right. So, it seems to me, in a big picture view, that the county budget, there's two different opposing views on approaching capital projects and the budget. One is to spend money, to pre-tax everybody, collect that tax money, have money set aside to fund projects as they come along. That's not right? have money set aside to fund projects as they come along. That's not right. Okay.
No.
That's not right. Okay, that's one theory. The other perspective is that we fund projects by keeping a savings account. Keeping a savings account or taking loans. Those are the two ways we pay for projects, as far as I know. So I just think it would be nice for the public to have an input of which way they want to go. We have a one-on-one building we want to build, or a medical examiner's office we want to build, and how are we going to fund it? Do we want to do it with loans, or do we want to do it out of savings and tax people ahead of time to fund those things? I think that's, that's the way I'm seeing it in any way. Maybe I'm wrong. And when you talk about projects such as the medical examiner's office, I would like it if there was a, a, a ballot issue just to get a, a feel for the public's taste for, or appetite for that project, so that you know whether we want a medical examiner's office instead of just going ahead and making these decisions on our behalf without any input. Yeah, that's about it.
Ms. Vien's, thank you so much. Court now calls John Book. Mr. Book, please state your name and the precinct you reside.
John Book, precinct two. Uh, just again, I appreciate, uh, the time and opportunity to speak this morning on this particular item. The concern I have, uh, that has, has trended along on this is, uh, had been echoed in other instances, the difference of how we fund our county budget and how we speak with one voice, or we don't speak with one voice as a commissioners' court. Um, the budgeting side of this, where we're going month to month on certain outside consultants, I'm concerned if that's still ongoing. I don't know if that is something that the court can answer. Are we currently paying for outside consultants on a monthly basis for, uh, Roden Bridge and similar things? Are we?
Yes.
Is that, I mean, in that case, the question I have going forward is, you know, when we're talking about a four or a three-story building and the capital outlay project of that, uh, reminded of scripture on that, we're, you know, have we estimated the cost in the build? And we have not. We're coming after the, the gate is out, already gone. I, I respect the concerns for previous, uh, points on the, on the, uh, agenda today. Where we're at is the finish line. I'm not trying to come and change the budget. We're already doing the budget, should be already considering thoughtfully regardless of the tax figures for next fiscal year and on, should be considering where are our belt and suspenders fiscally because we're dealing with the effects of years ago today. And so I'm not here to go and say, you know, whittle this further down beyond all measure. If we have needs in the county and the community, if we have, uh, you know, fiscal constraints, concerns, we're still going to be having to do that in the future. And so my question on the court here is, are we actually limiting that spending? Are we just pushing it beyond today? Because, um, whether it's a, a donation or whether or not it's a tax, it's still going to come out of my pocket. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Book. That concludes public citizen speakers on agenda item number four. Commissioners, are there any comments, discussion you would like to have, or any experts from our audience to call up? There being none, we have a motion and a second on agenda item number four as amended. We will continue with the roll call vote on the agenda item number four. Commissioner Nettles.
Aye.
Commissioner Condola.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Watson.
Aye.
Show the judge voting aye. Agenda item number four is approved. Moving to agenda item number five, resolution twenty-five dash zero-zero-eight, levying a tax rate for Brazos County for the tax year 2025. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a total tax rate of zero point four-one-nine-seven-zero-zero per one hundred of valuation, which is effectively an eight point two-six percent increase in the tax rate. The rate consists of a maintenance and operations rate of zero point three-eight-nine-four-five-four per one hundred dollars of evaluation, and a debt service rate of zero point zero-three-zero-two-four-six per hundred dollar of evaluation.
Second.
We have a motion and a, a second. Is there any discussion? We do have citizen input.
I move to amend.
Second. We have a motion to amend.
Amendment is to adopt a county tax rate with a 2024 tax rate of point four-one-nine-seven-zero-zero.
That's what I did.
Uh, it's not. Your rate is four-two-three-zero-five.
No, I just read the motion.
Well, I'm looking at the, well, read, read the.
I'm sorry. The motion was of zero point four-one-nine-seven-zero-zero. Yes, sir.
Nevermind.
So do you withdraw your motion? Do you withdraw your second?
I withdraw my second.
Motion's, any discussion before, or we have, we do have citizen input.
So, so what is the actual increase?
There is effectively no increase. The increase is based on the legislature telling us that we have to post an increase above what the NNR number is. We are effectively keeping the tax rate flat.
So it's, it's the same as the 2024?
The same as the 2025, correct?
Twenty-four.
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 Tax year fiscal year, tax year twenty-four.
Yeah.
Yes.
Twenty-twenty-four.
Yes, correct, sorry.
Just be easy.
Once again, we, the complication and confusion is obvious. We are dealing with statute legislation and doing this. The motion was to keep the flat tax, the tax rate flat.
Which is different from what we proposed two weeks ago.
We proposed the VAR to give us room for all the landmines that we discussed in the budget workshop for eight days, as well as the workshop this morning.
So what was the percentage of what we did two weeks ago down to what it is today? What's that, uh?
So, so why was the resolution wrong in the packet?
Ms. Payne.
The resolution was based on the proposed rate during the adoption of the tax rate. It could change.
And so I made a motion to go to the flat.
And proposed rate could be that rate or lower. It could not be higher. So this court on that day, in fact, I think we were five for five-zero.
It was five-zero, correct.
Not only passed it, but passed it with everybody acknowledging this is a ceiling. No one wanted to go above that ceiling. Your paperwork and proposed budget was based on that ceiling. The motion before us today is to not go to that ceiling, but to keep the rate flat.
Correct, and based on the.
So we went from the ceiling to the floor.
No.
Well.
To the ceiling fan.
She said, don't say that.
Ceiling fan, yeah.
Yes, and based on the commissioners' court requirements, I'll have to attach backup, and that was a backup based on the what was proposed.
But that's the confusion, yeah.
Yes. Any more questions?
Any further discussion or question for Mrs. Payne? There being none, the court now calls John Book. Mr. Book, please state your name and the precinct you live in.
Judge Cattell. Commissioners, thank y'all for looking at this as a no. I, I think I've understood this last, I'm, my head is spinning a little bit, but, uh.
Hey, ours, ours is too.
Yes, yes, sir. So in that regard, my understanding is, in this case, the, the proposed is now at the flat, so I, I, my concerns are, are met with your, uh, motion this morning, and I appreciate.
Mr. Book, thank you for your engagement. Commissioners, any further discussion?
Well, and.
Apologies to Commissioner Nettles. I tried to be as clear as possible that it was, what number it was. I will speak more clearly to the best of my ability.
Just, just that it was in the, it was in the media that, that we were doing a, a larger increase even than the ceiling, which we're not adopting the ceiling, but that we were doing a larger increase even than what the ceiling said. So hopefully this, everyone is clear as mud today that we're, that that was wrong, that we're not doing the ceiling, and that we're keeping the rate flat.
Well, our, our.
Commissioner Brown.
Our esteemed newsman from the Eagle came and showed me that they only reported a one percent.
Yes.
Even though KBTX reported a twelve percent. So hopefully KBTX will, will downgrade that dramatically.
And I think KBTX's twelve percent was based on a no new revenue rate, which by statute is what we have to say.
Based off the VAR that we adopted, previous.
Joe Southern, you're right, had the one percent. And then just, you know, another media member got it wrong. So it, it happens. We get stuff wrong, so it happens. Just, just glad that we could clarify that today.
Any further discussion? There being none, we will continue on agenda item number five with a roll call vote. Commissioner Nettles.
Aye.
Commissioner Condola.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Watson.
Aye.
Show the judge voting aye. Moving to agenda item number six, ratification of the property tax increase due to the adoption of the budget that will require more revenue from property taxes than in the previous year.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have to, I believe I have to read this motion as is.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Please, let me continue, and I apologize. Ratification of the property tax increase due to the adoption of the budget that will require more revenue from property taxes than the previous year. This budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is an eleven point one-four percent increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year is three million six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars and sixty-nine.
You gotta go back up there and read that.
Yes.
It's fourteen million. Go back, where it says last year's budget.
You, you said thirteen thousand.
His resolution's different than what was posted online because he, the motion was to decrease the tax rate. So he's reading the correct one.
Oh, okay. Well, he's saying something different than what we have.
Yes.
Told you we'd get it wrong.
Because of, well, I will read it one more time because of the confusion. This budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of thirteen million one hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is an eleven point one-four percent increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year is three million six hundred and fifty-seven thousand and sixty-nine dollars. Remember, this is based on the NNR, as we've stated multiple times today. I think it was eighteen, this would be nineteen. So, Mr. Condola. So, I make a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion?
So I have a question. So you just read that, but the reality is, because of our action previously, we are not changing the rate from last year.
Correct.
That's right.
Okay.
Any questions, discussion from any commissioners? Commissioner Brown.
And, and what you read there really has to do with, with the growth of the county and all the new homes and businesses that are on the tax rolls this year that weren't on the tax rolls last year.
Correct.
So.
To Mr. Condola.
Right, the three-point-seven million of it is, yes.
Yeah.
That's right.
I just don't want to be confused with the tax rate.
Correct. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on agenda item six. I will continue the roll call, even though I said three, four, and five, this one is as duly important. Commissioner Nettles.
Aye.
Commissioner Condola.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Watson.
Aye.
So the judge voting aye. Moving to agenda item number seven, resolution twenty-five dash zero-zero-nine, approving the budget of the Brazos County Emergency Communications District.
So I move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number eight, approval requested for Constable Precinct Three to apply for NRA grant foundation for training, ammunition, and supplies.
So, so I move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number nine, approval of the sheriff and constable fees per local government code one-one-eight dot point one-three-one F. New fees to be effective January one, twenty-twenty-six.
Move approval.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Do we have any discussion? There being.
This is, this increases, where's, this increases some of those fees, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any further discussion on agenda item number nine? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number ten, approval of judicial professional liability insurance policy for county court at law number one in payment of premium in lieu of bond pursuant to Texas Government Code twenty-five point zero-zero-zero-six.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, can we get all the courts to consider this? Apparently, this is a reduction in the cost from a bond and offers greater coverage. So I want to applaud, uh, Judge Matsky for taking the initiative on this.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Nettles. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number eleven, approval of order exempting the professional services agreement, number twenty-five dash zero-six-one, medical and health services with Dr. Joel Richards, DOAK Doc Healthcare, from competitive bid, bidding pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code two-six-two point zero-two-four A dot four.
Move for, go ahead.
We have a.
Move for approval?
Move for approval? Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Nettles.
So I'm going to abstain from voting on this. I'm actually a patient of Doc Healthcare, so I don't know if that's a conflict or not, but for appearance's sake, I'd prefer not to enter into that, and I'll just abstain from this vote.
Appreciate the knowledge. Thank you. Commissioners, any further discussion?
You look healthy.
It's a good thing.
He said you look healthy.
We have a motion and a second on agenda item number eleven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number twelve, approval of the following fiscal year twenty-six title for, excuse me, four dash E child welfare service legal and foster care contracts.
Move for approval A through C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
God bless the work they do.
Duly noted. Thank you, Commissioner Condola. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number thirteen, approval of deductive change order to CIP number twenty-five dash five-seven-eight, Hidden Springs and Stony Brook Culvert Replacement with TexCon General Contractors in the amount of eighty-one thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-six cents.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number fourteen, award of bid number twenty-six dash zero-zero-five, water treatment, recommended award Water Engineering Incorporated.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number fifteen, approval of contract number twenty-six dash zero-zero-seven for copier maintenance and Dayhill Office Technology Corporation DBA Xerox Business Solutions Southwest.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Nettles. Any discussion?
Yeah, Charles, Charles still here? Of course.
Mr. Wint.
We really need to move away from these individual printers and use our, these copiers as printers. Is that a additional function that they provide?
The machines that we purchase are multi-function. They do copy, scan, fax, uh, and print, and so that, that is an available option. Uh, we don't make that determination. Uh, we work in conjunction with, um, the court to, NIT, to determine those needs as appropriate.
Okay.
So you're saying, you're, you're, I'm sorry, could you repeat the change you want to see?
Well, I, I'm fine with this contract, but I do think in the future, have, one of the challenges I think the county, any organization has, where you have multiple different types of printers that people are using, then you have to maintain multiple different types of ink. And some of them are very expensive.
Yeah.
Nina's is very expensive, six hundred dollars for her printer. So we need a separate printer for her, but we need to have one that's standardized across the county. I only know that because you told me, so.
Mr. Wint, thank you. Commissioner Nettles, anything further?
No.
Any other further discussion on agenda item number fifteen? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number sixteen, request to consider approval of acceptance of the roads and drainage structures within the road right-ofways of Colter Business Park Phase One into Brazos County Road Maintenance System. Structures are in compliance with the Brazos County Subdivision Regulations. Site is located in precinct two.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I appreciate the contractors working well with Roden Bridge and getting that done.
Thank you, Mr. Condola. Any further discussion from the court? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number seventeen, consider and take action on the frontier communications utility permit to directional bore fiber conduit within the right-ofways and construct road bores under the following county roads in precinct two.
Move for approval A through F.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, commissioners? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Eighteen, Tax Refund Applications for the Following...
Move for approval, A through C.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Budget Amendments, Fiscal Year Twenty-four Twenty-five Budget Amendments for Five point zero-one dash four-five point oh-four.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Agenda Item Twenty, Personnel Change of Status.
Move for approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Twenty-one, Payment of Claims.
Move approval.
Is that move approval, A through B?
A through B, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, Commissioner Watson, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. We will skip over Agenda Items Twenty-two and Twenty-three, acknowledgment of the Fiscal Year Twenty-four Twenty-five Budget to Actuals by Funds as of August Twenty-eight, Two Thousand Twenty-five, acknowledgment of the Fiscal Year Twenty-four Twenty-five Contingency Budget to Actuals by Funds as of August Twenty-eight, Twenty-five, and now we get Agenda Item Number Twenty-five, Juvenile Director's Report on Detention Population. Linda, thank you for being here this morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, we have twenty-four in detention, twenty-one males, three females, and twenty-nine on electronic monitor.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Linda? There being none, thank you, Linda. Moving to Agenda Item Number Twenty-six, the Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population. Chief?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This morning, our population is seven hundred seventy-three, there are six hundred fifty-eight males and one hundred fifteen females, and we have fifty-one on electronic monitor.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, any questions? Chief Stewart? No, thank you. Moving back to Agenda Item Number Twenty-two, do I have a list of folks we need to call for that room?
Number Twenty-seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm moving too fast. Agenda Item Twenty-seven, Announcements of Interest Items and Possible Future Agenda Topics, Commissioners?
I just...
Commissioner Nettles?
I'll let you.
Commissioner Condola?
Now, if you...
Who's on first?
I just wanted to extend personal condolences to the family of Al Jones, general and former judge, a leader in the Army, a leader in the county, a leader in the community, and I'll tell a funny story. I got hit once driving my truck down Texas Avenue and started following the guy that hit me, he wouldn't pull over, and I... Eventually, I was waiting for a police officer, you know, I normally got nailed any time I was speeding at that age, but I couldn't find one to save my life and just put the license plate to my memory and pulled over, and this man pulled up in a car next to me, he had a phone about the size of a torso, this is in the nineties, and I said, "Keep following him, I'm on the phone with the police." So, eventually, the police catch up with us and we pull over, and this young man is confronted for his wrongs and all is well, and the cops told me, "That's the county judge right there, that helped you out." So, I was just a broke college kid, and this guy took time out of his day, saw something that didn't agree with what was right, and helped us follow and get it settled, so I thought that was... That's how I met him, and anyone that knows him is not surprised at all by that story because they probably have something similar. What a man.
Any comments on Judge Jones before I jump in?
Contoluses and prayers to the family.
Commissioner Nettles?
So, I would point out that backing the badge barbecue is...
Oh, we're still on Judge Jones.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I just... I want to share a story that when I was first married and lived in our first home and didn't understand politics as well as I think I do now, which I probably don't, but this gentleman knocked on our door and spent thirty-five minutes with Marcie and I, and I think we were both twenty-three years old. The impact that that man had on... In that moment, and then to continue to be a friendship, was Judge Al Jones, what a true gentleman and a public servant. If you would all be so kind that we offer a moment of silence in the court today. Thank you, God bless Judge Jones. Commissioner Nettles?
So, backing the badge barbecue will be this Friday, September twelfth, it is going to be at the Legends Events Center Thursday afternoon at three o'clock, they're going to be setting up tents, and so they're asking for volunteers.
What time's the event?
The event is at noon on Friday.
Noon Friday at Legends Events Center?
Yes.
And looking for volunteers Thursday at three?
After three o'clock to help set up tents and everything.
Volunteers needed. Commissioners, any other announcements? Commissioner Brown?
Judge, I'd like to put on the... On a future date, all the consulting contracts we have and how much we're paying each consultant throughout the county.
Thank you, duly noted. Commissioner Watson?
I will again be hosting, co-hosting, I co-host my town halls, I don't just do it by myself, just because that's one way for me to get a better attendance for the constituents in Precinct Four, and I don't have in front of me the... We'll have different topics this time around, but on Saturday, September the twentieth, at the Carver Center on East MLK, we will be hosting that from ten to one. If you all would like to attend, it is posted on our website, and then I will probably mention it in next court date in terms of what the schedule of topics that we'll talk about, because I always like to have mine as an informational, as someone talked about, how do we disseminate information as it relates to how the county operates. Sometimes it takes outside forums outside of the court because not everyone is able to come to court on a Tuesday morning at ten o'clock, and so I choose to use my forum in terms of my town halls to sort of be that information source, not only just about what the court does, but just resources and things that are happening in the county. And so, on September the twentieth at ten a.m. at the Carver Center on MLK, I will be hosting, co-hosting with the City Council and other elected officials, a town hall.
Thank you, Commissioner Watson, and real quick, it says items of interest, so knowing that we were listening during certain parts of public testimony, and I'm looking at Mr. Book and Cynthia and our... And Mr. Barnes, somebody mentioned it. So, today is Tuesday. Yesterday morning, around nine fifteen, Marcia and I discovered the two thousand and ten policy and procedures for commissioners on coming to the court that was dated two thousand and ten. To your comments today, those have been handed out to all staff legal, and we are working on those, and a new policy and procedure handbook for new commissioners, AKA Slack Acting County Judges, will be available to not only the commissioners, but to the public, and we look forward to sharing that with you as we update the world in two thousand and twenty-five, as two thousand and twenty-six quickly approaches. We will now move to Agenda Item Number Twenty-two to convene an executive session. Bruce, do you have any comments?
I know, sir, do you need a...
I need a list of individuals needed for this incredible meeting.
It would be Ed, myself, HR, and...
Hold on, so Ed...
Bruce.
Bruce, Jennifer, Rayanna...
And Nina.
And Nina.
I believe.
And Aubrey, as always.
As always.
Thank you. It is now eleven twenty-six, the Brazos County Commissioners Court will recess into executive session.